The topic for future discussion or refer the matter to staff. No personal attacks on council members or see staff will be allowed. The mayor may call point of order to stop the personal attacks. Individual continues. If you personally attack an elected official or state senator in a meeting, they may be barred. Call speed two, we'll have the invocation and we'll have Father Fred Janicek. Am I correct?
Yes. I am Father Fred Yarcheck and I am the new priest in charge of St. Joel's Orthodox Church at Alpine East of Diego and across the street from the community center. I was assigned here on September 10th, each Sunday, we have services at 10:00 AM. It's a service that is 1600 years old in English. This is the oldest service in Alpine. We are descended from the apostles. Now let us pray. Our Lord Jesus Christ, you did pray at the last supper. I do not pray for these alone, but also for those who will believe in me, do their work, that they may be one as you, Father, are in me, in I, in you, and they may be one in us. That the world may believe that you sent me, and the glory you have given me, I have given them, that they may be one just as we are one, I am them and you are me, that they may be made perfect and one, that the world may know that you sent me and have loved me as you have loved me. Also at the last supper you said, as the Father loved me, I also have loved you. Abide in my love if you keep my commandments, you will abide in my love, just as I have kept my Father's commandments and abide in me. These things I have spoken, that my joy may remain in you and that your joy may be full. This is my commandment, that you love one another as I love you, greater love as no one than this, that they lay down one's life for his friend. You are my friends if you do what I command. Christ our God, we pray that you ascend on each and every one of us here present, the Holy Spirit, the Spirit of truth, who will guide us in all truth, who is the giver of life and is everywhere and fills all things. We pray that the Holy Spirit will be in the hearts of every one of us, fill us with love for each, for one another, as well as our neighbors and everyone created in the image of light as of God. We pray that we may be one as most holy trinity is one and act to serve all the people of Alpine and all people everywhere. May the grace of our Lord Jesus Christ, the love of God, Father, and the communion of the Holy Spirit be with you all. Please be with you.
Thank you, Father. Wishing you good day.
Wishing you good day. United States of America, and we are a republic of all nations, one nation under God, and in this world, with liberty and justice for all.
Honorable citizens, congratulations, we are a state under God, one in this nation. Secretary, we have a form.
May your due on the form where the city has been councillor Fitzgerald and the notice was posted at 5:00 PM on March 1st, 2019.
Okay, thank you. Okay, we do have some recognitions today and it looks like it's March birthday. We've got several, we've got Kelly Jackson, Hector O'Deen, Arlene Fondo, Victor Moniz, and Victor Metas. Happy birthday to y'all and anyone. Okay, I don't have a report and city manager is excused and we don't have any city updates. Public chairing none and we'll go to the consent agenda at city manager.
The consent agenda contains approval of minutes from city council meeting on February 5th, 2019, approval of city minutes from council meeting on February 19th, 2019, approval of minutes from special city council meeting held on February 25th, 2019, approval of new hander construction event package for the Alpine Conspiracy Municipal Airport and approved lease of airport land to Cape Woodward with a construction start date beginning the date of FAA approval with the amendment to reduce the setback from 120 to 90 feet.
Thank you. Yes, sir. Mayor, I have made a motion that we approve the consent agenda. Okay, is there a second?
A second.
Okay, motion is made, second, any discussion? Seeing none, all's in favor, raise your right hand, opposed, white sign, motion case. Thank you, I'm giving up. Okay, we'll have the information or discussion items and at the city manager.
The first item is a quarterly report from the Alpine Public Library by Executive Director Don Wittenrower, sorry if I mispronounce your last name.
Okay. Wittenrower. Hold on.
I miss my last name.
Good evening and thank you for having me over to give a report. I'd like to start out by telling you, I think that the Alpine Public Library has started off the year in a good place. We've got some new adult classes going on, a lot of interesting kids programs, and we got a nice grant last week that came into Brewster Kids Campaign. Before I talk about some of that, I wanted to, since I'm working on our accreditation report for 2018 for the Texas State Library Archives Commission, I wanted to go ahead and give you some numbers that are going to be in the report for the end of 2018. So at the end of the year, we had 8,333 Brewster County patrons and during the year, we had 288 new patrons. We have 230 non-Brewster County patrons and those are people who are visitors that buy a temporary six-month membership at the library. We have 144 Tech Share patrons and those are people in Texas that have got a Tech Share card as their home library and then they can go to any Tech Share library in the state and get a library card for that library. We have 144 people that are doing that. We had at the end of the year, 23,981 holdings worth of value, about $630,000. For 2018, we had 94,981 circulations, 45,588 visits to the library and another 15,000, just over 15,000 to the Rereads Bookstore. We presented 352 youth and teen programs, 211 adult programs for a total of 563 and we had a total attendance of 7,315 for all the programs. Want to mention interlibrary loans for a minute. Interlibrary loans is a great way that we can get materials to people here in Alpine without having to have them on the shelf. We essentially have a catalog that covers the whole country and if somebody comes in and is interested in something that we don't have, we can generally get it to them within a week or so. Last year, we brought in 579 materials of patrons at the library, but in addition to that, we lent out to other libraries 239 materials of ours. So that was libraries in Texas and other states. So our first fundraiser of the year seemed to be a hit. Dancing with the Alpine Stars went over really well. We had nine couples dancing. They entertained a sellout crowd of over 250 people and they brought the library about $13,000. So the nice thing about it was everybody seemed to be having a good time. All the dances were unique and everybody, every critique ever heard this said they did a really nice job. So I guess that means we're good. So we have New Circle Civic Center for next year, February 29th, 2020, for another round two of Dancing with the Alpine Stars. The interesting thing is we thought we would have people not, you know, we have trouble getting people to do this, but we have a lot of people and actually during the event, we had people come up and say, how do I do this next year? So we may have to figure out a way to limit the number of guests. We'll see. I wanted to mention our tutoring rooms I've mentioned before that we're putting in, so we're repurposing some of the space in the back of Rereads with a couple of tutoring rooms. We started at the beginning of February and they're nearly complete. So right now, we have about seven tutors that are doing citizenship, GED, ESL, and sometimes we have three or four tutors that want to tutor at the same time and we only have one room. And that's also the copy room and the staff work room. So we don't have enough space and they're going to be happy when we add these other two rooms. I think it might even give us the opportunity to do some expansion on tutoring. Some other adult classes that we have, we now have three Spanish classes a week, the beginning, intermediate, and advanced. We are continuing with the English conversation classes for non-English speakers and we've added a Spanish conversation class where people learn to keep their Spanish skills, their Spanish language skills. Coming up in April, we're going to have an all-ages program by Saul Ross. They're coming down to the library and they're going to do something they're calling astronomy and snakes. I don't know what's, they haven't told me yet what that's about, except that it's going to have telescopes and I assume there's going to be snakes. That's April 6th at, I think they said 7:00 to 10:00 PM, so that's the first Saturday in April and if that happens to be a bad weather day, we'll have it the next Saturday. Last week, I went to the JobCon in Martha and we had a chance to visit with high school students from the tri-county area, talk to them about jobs at the library and just library jobs and journals. They had a really good turnout for that. And also last week, we received a $75,000 grant to go towards our kids campaign. So we're inching up to the halfway point, so that was a nice boost. The last thing I want to mention is our family steam nights and I've talked about those before. We had in February, 100 participants at our family slime night. So slime, you know, it's a non-nutonium liquid that is kind of solid and kind of flows sometimes. Anyway, these kids made glitter slime, highlighter slime, glow-in-the-dark slime, vampire vomit slime, molly mucus slime, and zombie booger slime.
Yeah.
So, pretty interesting. Anyway, they were talking about. Our next program for family steam light is Ozilbots and that's March 27th. And if you haven't ever seen an Ozilbot, I've got one here. I kind of feel like the old Johnny Carson show where they brought a zookeeper from the Los Angeles Zoo and showed some creature. This is an Ozilbot. So these things are programmable. There's five different levels of technique or five different levels of complexity. You can program it to level one and the kids can get on the computer and put in a program and then you hold this thing to the computer screen and you can actually flash the memory, put a new program on it. It's pretty amazing. So this is a simple maze that we drew up. It follows the black line and every time there's a different colors here, it signals the robot to do some other thing like, you know, here's one where it speeds up, here's one where it pauses, slows, cruises, anyway. So that's a simple thing and we're going to have that. These kids will be learning how to program these things and actually learning some of these things. We have 16 of them I think for kids we work with. So that's about all I have. If you have any questions, I will have to answer.
How are your computer education classes for adults?
We're doing one-on-one classes now, so when we have somebody that comes in and needs some help, we have a person that will work with them one-on-one. It got too complicated trying to do more people because everybody was at a different skill level. Some people got bored and some people, you know, never got what they wanted, so this is working out there.
That's an excellent idea and long I'd like to compliment you and your staff for the creativity of the Dancing with the Alpine Stars. It was a funny breath and we enjoyed it tremendously.
Well, we started out wondering if we should even do it and then when we got a couple of people signed up, we said, okay, so now we got to go to the next step and really get with it. So I guess it worked out well. And I think the really good thing was the quality of the dancing that everybody did.
Don, I want to thank you and your staff for the fantastic job you all do at the library.
Thank you.
Yeah, and I had a little investment in that dance contest. I hope you did well.
I don't know, I don't know the end of the voting, but I'll tell you at the end, there was only a few votes between each of the groups, so it was very close.
Okay. Thank you very much, sir.
Thanks.
The next report will be the Emergency Management Coordinator by Stephanie Elmore.
Hi, everybody, how are you?
Pretty good.
Okay, so I have a lot going on within the county and hopefully this year is off to a good start. So first off, I want to start with the fire truck inspections. That was the last and final thing that we needed to transfer all the trucks from the city to the county. So I'll be bringing by, I'll be bringing those next week. Do it.
From the county to the city.
Yeah, county to the city. And so I'll have those next week for y'all, I mean, this week for y'all. Another thing that I've been working on is a grant. So there's several actually. So one of them, I know that me, the judge in Martha, we were meeting bi-weekly, but I know we've been all of them pretty busy, so we're going to start those meetings up again. There's one grant that's through the Texas Community Development Block Grant Program that we're going to look into, so it's for fire trucks, ambulance, jaws of life. So we're going to see if we're going to be able to go forward with that grant and see what we can get out of it for y'all. We're also working on getting Marathon some new radios, which are called APX 6500. So I know we have two coming in through with the Yarborough Foundation and the county has purchased one because Marathon hasn't had any communications with their radios to the antennas, so we're trying to work on that and bring them up to speed on that. So the county got a new water tanker truck, so it has a double purpose. It's used for road and bridge, but it's also used for wildfires and fire season has started pretty early, so I know we'll probably be using that. So that was brought through the county, the USDA Rural Development Program, as well as Congressman Willard. So I know Congressman Willard had called the judge in Martha and asked if the fire department could assist if needed and luckily they didn't need our assistance in Presidio County, they got that fire under control, but it's used if anybody needs it. The National Guard, so I've met with them and they want to do, they want to help out with the fire department. I know they have some people that are certified firefighters that want to be involved with our fire department here and there's some other guys that want to come in and they want to help out with the EMC part and so they want to like help clean the station. Some of them are certified mechanics, if there's any maintenance or anything that needs to be done, they're willing to help out with that. So I think they're going to start coming in on Tuesdays and Thursdays. I haven't heard anything further from that, but I know they're going to get back to me. I'll see them tomorrow, actually. So the burn ban is still in effect, but we do have a prescribed burn coming up on March 7th. So this prescribed burning was supposed to happen in October and then it got moved to March 4th and now it's moved to March 7th. And so just to give you all a little brief about that, it's through Texas Parks and Wildlife and the Fire Marshals, they're coming to burn Elephant Mountain and so it's going to be a couple, I think 100 acres that they're going to burn. So if y'all see smoke this week, that's what it is and I'm going to notify, they confirmed it today, so I'll be notifying dispatch, AP, Sheriff's Office, and fire department about that.
What are they doing to burn?
They want to clear out, I guess to bring all the grass back in for the animals and I'm not sure what else, I know that part, but they want to get it all ready and to go for that. So yeah, it's been, they have like, they have like a whole burn plan that they're going to give me on Thursday. We also, I submitted another grant to the Council of Governments for six radio antenna repeaters and that'll be utilized by, of course, like the Sheriff's Department and it'll be there for fire department, any other dispatch. So those will be updated. I know we had some, I think it's in, there's one in the black gap that the bears keep tearing down, so hopefully when we get those cut up, we'll have fences around that so they don't get broken. This past Saturday, the Big Bend Regional Medical Center had their health there and of course, one of our big things still is hyper reach, so we got people signed up for that. We had several people sign up. I had posted it, had people message me to sign up and then people wanted to, like had concerns and questions and so they wanted to find out some things about emergency management. So I got to talk about that and what we're doing and what we're up to. So that was pretty exciting just to inform the public about it. On March 18th, so anybody that wants to come to this, commissioners and city council members, we're having a web EOC STAR exercise. So the district coordinator requested one and it's a training. So what this is, is when there's any type of emergency, we go into the web EOC STAR and we tell them what's going on. From there, they'll get us resources out here and just how to go through each step-by-step for a major emergency. So that'll be March 18th at 10:00, 10:00 AM. So one of the big things that's been happening is power outages. So we had a meeting with AP and they discussed what's going on, like their plans and everything and we're going to have, I think it's quarterly updates with them, so we'll meet with them. I know one of the main reasons why the power outages were happening is because what they were working on all the way to Marathon, so hopefully we won't have any in the near future, but I know they have another project coming and they're going to tell me about it in the next quarterly report, so they might use the power outages in the summer, but we'll see how that goes. Let's see, so water tanks. We're supposed to get water tanks out of Double Diamond and at our next commissioners' court, we're going to present and try to get those approved and we have a meeting on March 11th with HOA for Double Diamond, so hopefully we'll get a slab put out there and get one out there in a few weeks, which I'm excited because we started this project last year and it's finally in motion and that'll be utilized for Alpine Fire Department. And then I met with UT Austin, I went to Austin in December, so the CAG had talked about earthquakes. So I met with TexNet and we're actually installing another seismic machine in our county and I think we're going to have it in South County. They're going to send us maps on the earthquakes, they want to have a presentation, the Earth Economic Geology and TexNet want to come down and inform the people about earthquakes, what the seismic machines are doing, let them know how often the earthquakes are happening here. And then another thing, so I had a meeting with Red Cross a few weeks ago and I'm pretty excited about this. So we don't have, like, we have the civic center, we have the commissioner's court room and the EOC in case there's any disaster, we have shelter there, but now we're getting a housing shelter, it's a trailer that sleeps 17 people, I believe, and so we're going to have one stationed here in Brewster County and it'll be used for Lahitas, Presidio County. And so whoever meets, whoever needs it, aldray it to wherever they need and it's always going to be restocked. They also want to see if they can give us some generators, which would be good if we can get some for the civic center. That would be nice. And then we're also going to start, they want to start Red Cross Club at the college and for high school students, so I'm going to have a meeting with the person that's in charge of that and get kids involved and get them to know what Red Cross is all about. And then we're also going to have some shelter fundamental trains that are coming in. So Red Cross wants to schedule a couple, so anybody who wants to attend can know the basics, shelter training. A couple more things, I know that y'all are going to put a container at the fire station and there's supposed to be a big mural on it. I heard that's coming into place, so Road and Bridge is either going to put pallets down or cement slabs, so we can get that out there. And then, so one of the big things right now is that we've had a lot of people come in for floodplains. They want to know like elevations, if there are places in the floodplain, stuff like that. Well, you have to be certified for that, so I'm going to be going to a training where I can get certified to be a floodplain manager. So now we'll have someone in the county that's able to do that, do the EMC part. That's pretty much all I have, it was a lot.
Going back to the controlled burn at Elephant Mountain, are you going to put it in the radio, where the radio stations?
Yes.
So the public knows about it.
I am.
Thank you.
And if the winds, so the winds forecast being 10 to 20 miles an hour, what's your max wind speed for that?
Well, they said that if there's any wind at all, they don't want to do it.
Because you got wind 10 to 20 tomorrow, Thursday 10 to 20, Friday is 15 to 25, it's gusts up to 40.
Yeah, I think they're going to be here for a week, so it'll be like an off and on burn. So whenever it's not windy, they're going to start burning and when the winds pick up, they'll put it out and set aside for a little bit.
Good to see you. More questions? Thank you very much. Great report.
The next report, unfortunately, since councillor Fitzgerald isn't here, won't be presented as far as I know. It was the county city engagement. You want to table that for the next meeting?
We'll table that, yes.
And then we had a presentation update on the TexDOT US 67 Corridor Master Plan by Chris Weber and Vicky Krasco.
Hi, good afternoon. My name is Vicky Krasco and I'm with the US 67 Corridor Study Team and thank you for having us here. We just wanted to come and give you a few updates on where our study is. As you are aware, TexDOT is, has embarked in a pretty big study for the region for the corridor from I-10, US 67, 142 miles, all the way to the port of entry in Presidio. And we're basically a little over a year into the study. We've already had two big set of public meetings. One we had last week and then we had our second set of public meetings in November and all the public meetings are held in the city of Presidio, Martha, and Alpine and we have also alternated with public meetings in Fort Davis and Fort Stockton. So basically where we are right now is that we are, have been evaluating all the comments and inputs that we've been receiving from the public in regards to what some of the needs and issues are for the existing corridor and we have a specifically gearing up for the third and final set of public meetings, which at this point is hopefully going to be in June. And these public meetings are going to be one of the most important ones for the three communities and the people that live along the corridor because we're going to be expressing what we have heard throughout the whole study and actually presenting concepts of what some specific improvements are going to be for the cities, but also for the segments in between the cities. As you might be aware, this study has had a big focus on safety and that's one of the biggest things that we're trying to analyze data and traffic and again, looking at the input that we have received from the public. And if you haven't, if you weren't able to attend any of the public meetings, one of the very neat things that our study team has done is that we have this thing called virtual public meetings, so you can actually go online and there's a lot of resources, all of our frequently asked questions there on the TexDOT website, but specifically the virtual public meetings, you can click on the link and you can actually see all the displays that were presented at each of the public meetings and you can look at documents that were shared and you can actually also look at all, we have a big binder of comments that we have received online, in person, people drawing on things, so that binder is also found online. So we've been keeping track of all of these comments, so a lot of those resources and background information is available and I can share with all of you those links just so that you have quick access to them. But with that, prior to the public meeting that we're having in June is that we have a corridor working group, which is a smaller group of people that we work with and all of you are invited to those meetings. We're planning on having a corridor working group meeting probably in May to prepare for the public meetings and prior to that, we're going to be having our third bus tour. We've had two bus tours already at the beginning of the study and then in the middle of the study and this is our third and final bus tour. The city councils members are invited to that specific tour, so we'll keep you posted on that date and those are the things that we're kind of planning at this point. So we're preparing for the bus tour, we're going to have the corridor working group meeting and then we're going to have the public meeting. The timeframe for us wrapping up and finalizing the actual study and the plan is hopefully having everything done by September for review and comments and having the plan finalized by October of this year. But with that, I'll, I have Chris here with TexDOT and really to share the importance of where we're coming from and where we're going into.
Thank you, Vicky, and I want to thank the council for allowing us to be here today.
Thank you, Vicky, and I wanna thank the council for allowing us to be here tonight. We always appreciate being here and sharing a little time with y'all. 4:30 last Friday, I got a SCARP reminder of, again, the extreme importance of this study. We had a rollover accident 26 miles from Martha, and unfortunately, driver lost his life. It's one of those, very gentle curve, sun shining. I don't have an explanation for why it happened, but I know we have one less person in Presidio That's the whole point of this study, is avoid having discussions like this. You know, the frustration I feel as an engineer is, I can't keep people awake when they drive. Maybe we can put some bumps on the side of the road and try. I can't keep people off their cell phones, I can't keep distractions out of vehicles. There's a lot of things we can't do. We can't drive for people either. Unfortunately, this whole corridor, for those that don't know it, if you look at the entire corridor of 142 miles, we're over the rural average for crashes over the last seven years as a corridor. And as an engineer, I don't, I don't, the reason we're asking for the public's help with this effort is, I don't, I can't give you an engineering reason why. I think the roads are in pretty good shape, but I'm also really biased to say that, given that I work for TexDOT. But there's always room for improvement, always things we can do. And one of the things that I wanted to share with y'all tonight, I thought if we started off this effort, and we were transparent, and we tried our whole soul best, and involved everyone, and included all the stakeholders that are possible, and we listened, and we formed our solutions based off the concerns we heard from the public, that this would be our best work. One thing I didn't anticipate, when you do things that are transparent, and y'all know this in the business you're in, and you slowly get people to understand, you know, don't listen to what I say, watch what we do, and you gain their trust, they don't show up to the meetings anymore, because there's no threat to their livelihood or their property or... And I talked with one of our public involvement specialists in Austin about it, and I was kinda sad, like, hey, we're doing this right, why isn't it working? She said, that's what happens when you do public involvement right. People only have so much time in the day, after their day jobs, to participate in different community events or volunteer activities. Generally, they're gonna go where they perceive a threat. So the compliment we all get for this effort is less involvement. And what I wanted to encourage y'all tonight is, when we do have this third and final round of public meetings, however you're able to participate, whether if you can't make the meeting, look at the virtual public meeting, come see in my office, contact, we can contact anyone on the study team. How you view these short, medium, and long-term projects in the future for this plan, you know, we all have an opportunity to kind of form how we do things on this corridor. And it's not just about US-67. We've already identified a lot of solutions, like improving super elevations, you don't need those little silly signs that say, on this curve, you better go 45. There's a lot of little things like that that are kind of fundamental solutions that are simple, we don't need people's land to do it, they're well within our purview to do, but we wanna know what the public thinks of those. Just because Chris Weber, an engineer, thinks this is a good idea, doesn't make it the community's vision. And what we're really asking for is this final push. We're expending a lot of resources to do this and to do it right. And if we do it right and all work together to do this, the same engineering principles, the same type of projects can be applied to 118, 17, 385. It's not just about this corridor. I've had the luxury through this study of working with a new group that's been formed in Austin, that's a, basically a strategic safety committee, to try to figure out, how do we, how do we keep 3,700 Texans from dying every year in our state highways? No small challenge. And what we've been told by the person leading that group is, this study effort and the way we're going about it and the things we're looking at and the ideas we've gotten from the community is basically a poster child for that effort in real cases. And that's a compliment to the community and everyone that's participated today. In closing, I'd just like to really ask that y'all, know everybody's busy, I'm busy too, but as we, as we come into this study here at the end, it's our final push to make sure this is our best work as a, as a community, and that's all, try count, including part paints, we got the blind chair. With that, if anybody has any questions, I'd have to take...
Chris, I know Vicky talked about the final meeting in June. Have you thought about the implications for school getting out, people going on vacations and all that? I just look at that as a concern, participation is hard on the community.
You get a choice of four out of 365, and generally, we're gonna pick the wrong date for somebody, it's just kind of the nature of it. Honestly, I've been to eight of these public meetings so far, I haven't seen a whole lot of people under 30 there, as far as college students and things. It tends to be, I guess, it's not older people, we'll call ourselves more mature folks that participate. Just had my 45th birthday last week, and I remember when 45 was old, it's not old anymore. Anything else?
Well, I just worry about parents planning vacations for their kids, so it's not about getting the kids there, it's where the parents be around, because they're off.
Sure. And it's an excellent point, any time of the year, there are conflicts of some sort, and that's, as Vicky mentioned, the importance of those virtual public meetings. You can still view everything as you were at the meeting, any video clip or presentation or anything that's up on a board, you can physically pull up and look at. And if you have questions about that, since you're not at the meeting, where you can ask those questions, we encourage you to follow up with us after and say, okay, well, you had this board at Station 3, what does this mean? Just because you're not able to make that meeting, doesn't mean, A, that your opinion can be heard, your question can be answered, but three, we're seeing how we're doing this, it'll be memorialized, and we've got over 1,000 pages of public comment, when the comment was received, who it was by, the date it was answered, what the answer is, or what our response is. And to us, that's, you can say you're being transparent, or I, as a person, can say, okay, a year ago, John Smith made a comment on February 4th. Oh, there it is, and here's the response. I mean, to me, you can't say you're engaging the public if they can't find their input in your effort.
When do you think you'll have the date in June 7?
So, and just...
I refer to the brain, the...
Just a clarification for that date, so there has been conversations within the team about that, so we are trying to be cognizant both about spring breaks, you know, not all the things during spring breaks or holidays. The initial set, the initial dates that we were thinking for the last final meeting was at the end of May. We got pushed because of our own timeline to the early June, and if for some reason it conflicts with when graduations are, then it will get, it might get pushed all the way till September. So we're definitely not trying to have meetings during the summer months for people on, so that's already for sure.
The sooner you get a date set, people can plan, that's the struggle.
Right.
Get a date set.
Because we know as soon as we plan around the public meetings, everyone's gonna cancel their vacations to show up. I like your optimism, Rick, I like your optimism. Anybody got any other questions for company?
I'm glad that you guys are bringing out safety first. I think that's crucial and utmost important for everyone in the community along the 67 corridor. So thank y'all for that.
Well, I don't know anyone in this room that doesn't use this corridor and all of our state highways adjacent, and people like me wouldn't be doing their job if we don't ensure that we all come together and make this our best work, because we're worth it. A little bias is with us, we're worth it. And with tourism being huge with our economy here, we want people to come out here and have a great time and have a safe trip, so they can tell their friends and come back and spend more money in Alpine and other places along the corridor.
Yeah, just wanted to comment that personally, I really appreciate the updates that I've been able to see in the emails regarding the planning efforts, and also the opportunity to be able to input. And, you know, have you guys consider whatever we have on this end? I think that's great.
And one thing I'd like to emphasize too, at the end of this, we don't have one project, we have a plan. And it's a plan that's been vetted by the different communities, cities, counties, both, and the residents of those counties and cities. But a plan is nothing without follow-through, funding, and updating that plan. And my favorite part about this study is, we're actually creating lots of paper that says we've identified safety issues. I'm no lawyer, but I'm pretty sure we would have to actively pursue funding for those and make some of this a reality, or we're sitting on our hands. Okay, you have identified some problems, what are you doing about it? So that's the part I'm excited about, is actually being able to implement some of these, more so in the short term than the long. But I just really wanna emphasize, we really want people's input, we really would appreciate anything you can do to come to a public meeting. If you're not able to, we can give you a preview of it prior, you don't have to wait till after. We don't turn anyone away, because there's less and less folks in the room every meeting.
Just like Ramon Carrasco, climbing part of the team, one last comment is, a virtual tour is like if you were walking into the meeting, so it's a pretty nice tool. And the last comment is, is on this last public meeting that we're gonna be having, I mean, we're gonna be presenting our findings and our alternatives. So there's gonna be a lot of options that we're gonna be showing to the public and to you guys. So it's very important for you, for everybody to try to attend, because this is basically what we find, and it's gonna be your last chance for, after we finish, before we finish our final plan.
Thank you all very much for your time tonight, as always, we appreciate it. And however you figured out how to get us early on the agenda, so I could go home and take care of my kid, I was thinking, I'm gonna blame Vicky for that, she's got more pull than I do. Thank you all very much.
We'll be up next time, okay?
Oh, we're good.
Thank you, Chris. And I guess you're up.
Yeah, I'm up again, so.
Yeah, let me just kind of provide counsel, make sure all the speed on the one that made sure we got this on the agenda. So as you recall, we all commissioned a study to be done. Vicky's with Clyman, and she wants to give us an update about where she's at in the process, because they're gonna start moving fairly quickly, all aim to trying to give recommendations back through the Parks Board back to us about how we proceed. So she's got some public meetings coming up, so I've gotta work a while to make sure we got that, council. She's got 10 slides she's gonna walk through this evening.
Okay, yeah. So yeah, I just wanted to provide a quick update on where we are with the process. We are going to, not have a lot of time for the discussion, and that's why I wanna mention just a few of the public meetings and other meetings that we have. A quick recap on the process that our team is doing is that we're first starting with an evaluation and park assessment of the park system. And really, what this means is that we're evaluating, you know, the parks that you have, the condition of the parks, an inventory of what's in the park, you know, the number of benches, the bathrooms, the number of courts, basketball courts. So it's a pretty intense evaluation, and that's actually the, in the area where we are right now. We're moving into the engagement part of this process, and this is where we start with public meetings and having one-on-one interviews and stakeholder meetings. And then from that, we move into the vision, which is where we start creating and formulating big visions for the park system, and also specific goals and objectives, and eventually, we have a plan that we develop. So I just wanted to emphasize what, one of the reasons that we are doing this for the city is that really, we hope that the city is positioned in a, in a way that they are able to pursue funds for specific improvements on the park. So once you have a master plan, that's one of the requirements if you want to look for funding from the Texas Parks and Wildlife Department. So if you, if a community does not have a master plan that's updated in the last five to 10 years, you won't even be eligible for applying. So that's one of the big reasons for doing the master plan. There's also specific funding that the communities can seek out through TexDOT, which is for sidewalk improvements or trails. And of course, there's other foundations and other organizations that do funding for parks. And in addition to that, there's also the city budget. So whenever the board and the community wants to seek funds from the city, we really wanna make sure that the master plan is observant of those issues. So that's one of the big things for creating the master plan. Yeah, and one other context, the context that we're working from, from an organization, is that we're evaluating everything that's been done in the past. There's been a lot of conversations about parks and efforts, so we're looking at the different history in regards to the park system, and also the different visions. So you might all recall that about two or three years ago, there was a downtown study vision plan that was done for the downtown historic district, so we're evaluating what was done during that time and the meetings that happened at that time. There's also been efforts from the community and nonprofits where they've done specific surveys in regards to this, to the park system, so we're looking at all that information. So all of this is compiled with our own inventory, and this is really to, for us to not be repeating work that's been done in the past, but really using everything so we can move forward. So these are different groups that we are targeting, so we're trying to meet specifically with city and county staff, because... Am I good?
Yeah.
Okay, so this is specifically with, with the maintenance staff and with other groups. We're also meeting with groups and businesses and economic development, police, EMS, and fire, sports leagues, educational institutions, including the ISD, Ansel Ross, and the general public, and nonprofits. So there's different groups that we're trying to target, and again, this is done in either one-on-one meetings, small groups. Neighborhood dialogos is something that we're still considering for outreach, and we're also planning on doing a survey, which is a citywide survey for this. The survey, we're planning on having it available both online, but also in MELA or Doorknob, and we're gonna be doing that fairly soon. I think we're finalizing the survey this week, and we're gonna have it open for about three to four weeks, so that we have time to collect data. So like I said, we have the stakeholder outreach, the public meetings, and then we're gonna be doing the plan development. We hope to have all of this complete by June, it's a very fast turnaround. So the next slide is actually one of the most important slides, if you wanna take anything away from this update. So if you look at the final tab at the very bottom, we want to make sure that the plan is approved by June, sometime in June, that's what our timeframe is working from. So if we move backwards, we need to have enough time to develop the plan, for the plan to be reviewed, for us to get input. So where everything starts is next Wednesday, we have our first public meeting, so that's March 13th, it's gonna be from 6 to 8 here at the Civic Center. So that public meeting is gonna be important for us, it's joined with the Parks and Recreation Board, that's where they meet as well. So we are, we actually have, I have the flyer here, it's ready for posting, and we're gonna be emailing this to different groups of the community that we are networked with, and we hope to, that the word gets around, it's gonna be published in the newspaper and the radio, hopefully they'll do some promotion of this meeting. But this is really the first opportunity for the public to bring input for us, for the public, for the park plan. After that, we plan on having a joint leadership session, so this is a very important meeting for the city council. But this meeting is, it's scheduled for April 4th, and this, I think it's a Thursday. And basically, what this meeting is gonna be is a collaboration between the city council and the Parks Board, and you all both coming together to evaluate all the data that we've been inventorying and collecting, and kind of coming up with some key structure to the plan and key priorities for the plan. Once we have that organized, then we are gonna be rushing to develop a draft plan, and that's gonna be shared with the public on April 17th. So for the public, the April 17th meeting is really one of the most important meetings, because that's when you'll get to see everything that we've been collecting and analyzed and presented, everything that we're trying to present about the evaluation of the park system and some recommendations. So that's gonna be the opportunity for the public to comment on the plan. And then after that, we have the park plan approved, hopefully by the board first, and then by the city council. So there is a month in between the second public meeting in June, a month and a half, for final edits and final reviews and things that we might have missed. So there is a long time period for that to happen, for that final input to happen. And then, one of the challenges and different things that we've been finding as we move with the plan is that, you know, I mentioned, you know, evaluating the different in past efforts, you know, we're wanting to make sure, you know, what's still relevant for the community, so that's, again, why the first public meeting is important. We are finding that there's different priorities and different interests. Our role is really to build consensus and find out where there's positive overlap for certain issues and needs. And then there's also this concept of actually finding out what parks and properties are owned by the city, and how many parks we have. So we've evaluated the different plans from the past, we know, I presume we have 14 parks online, it says there's 10, a different plan says there's 17. So we're trying to find out what the actual list of plans is, but one of the most legal ways of finding that out is actually looking at survey information, plaques, and ownership. That's something that's not within our scope, but we can have recommendations for how to best do that and how to prioritize that. So there's also some lands that they might have been deeded as parks to the city. So there's also some lands that they might have been deeded as parks to the city, but we don't know what the status is and what the restrictions are for that. So, and the, the reason that this is really important for us, and especially for Texas Parks and Wildlife, is that if a park has not been designated officially by the city, then you can use that as actually match for when you apply for funding for Texas Parks and Wildlife. So even though you have Medina Park, which might not be designated as a city park by resolution, just by the fact that you have a new resolution for that, you can say, hey, the city has actually dedicated this park, even though it's been a park for a long time, it can be dedicated, and then Texas and Parks and Wildlife can see that, okay, now it's legally dedicated as a park. So that's one of the things that we've been trying to research for park land ownership. Yeah, and like I said, these are different plans. So you have the plan for 1991, which is a comprehensive plan. We have a plan for 2001 to 2005, so that was the last time, at least that we have found a comprehensive plan for the city that has a chapter on the parks. And then we have the vision plan that was done fairly recently, I think in 2015, the vision plan. And then the last item that we have is, so one of the, my counterpart that works with Vista Planning and Design, he's based out of Austin, and he developed this existing conditions document, and it's included in the presentation, but it's such small, I printed it here. One of the big things about this document is that we will be sharing it in the second public meeting, because it has not been vetted by the board or by the city council yet. But the caveat, and there's a note at the bottom that says what the purpose of this map is, and basically what, what this map is, is that it's someone from the outside coming into the city, not really knowing any of the politics, any of the history. They just came in, they drove around town, and they put notes down and observations of what they saw. They put notes about the conditions of the parks, they put notes about, oh, this would be great for this, or there's no ADA accessibility. So even though you have a ramp, there might not be parking spots for ADA. So these are just observations of the existing parks, and again, this is not knowing also who owns what. So this is just a very bird's eye view of the community, again, from an outsider, and it helps us understand the way that the city physically is and some specific structures and conditions of the plan. So that's what this is. This is gonna be reviewed, like I said, in our joint workshop that we're planning to do before. So I think that's all I have. Oh, yeah, so the last thing is, one of the neat things that is part of our process is also doing a GIS map, where we're inventory, even though we're inventorying all the items in the parks, we're putting that on the map, so that it's available. Hopefully, after the study, the city can use this for having an online map of where your picnic tables are, what parks have shelters, what parks have the baseball courts or the basketball courts. So all of those items are gonna be mapped online, and we're working with Sol Ross in a class from their recreation, Parks and Rec Department. They're actually, actually today, they went out on the field to start. They use their phones, and they're out on the fields, they can take pictures, and then the point pops up on our website. So this is an internal city website at this point, not public yet. So with that, are there any questions?
One of the nice things about this GIS mapping that we created is that in the future, y'all can extend this system to map your water valves, your, wherever you have a lot of leaks, your manholes, so you can add, you can add, I mean, as many things that you want that will be helpful for the city. And the nice thing about this is that your guys that work in the field, they can go with your cell, with their cellphone, install their application, and they, they can shoot a shot right there, and it'll, and then they can, it'll automatically be mapped on the main website for the city. So it's not just the parks that could be used for this, it's anything that the city wants, I mean, they can upgrade it and do much more with this application.
Yeah, right now, the focus for the application is just the parks, that's what the inventory's for, but like Ramon said, in other communities where we use this, they, they use it specifically to map potholes, so when there's a, and even the public can do that when it's set up in the right way, that they say, hey, there's a pothole here, and the map gets updated quickly, so.
Yeah, they can even take pictures, some way they can take a picture and say, hey, city, we found a pothole here at this intersection, and then your, your maintenance guy can go immediately, hey, there's a pothole, let's go look at it. Lot of more work for them.
So is the time that's set for April fourth, and have you already worked with Cynthia on getting that on our calendar?
We, I, the time has been set between Jessica and I, so we're just following up on that, but it is...
So you're aware, to set a city council meeting, we have to do that.
Right.
So April fourth, if that's the date.
Right.
Jessica doesn't set that, we council it.
Yeah.
So you gotta get that into Cynthia quickly, so she can get that workhorse.
Okay, yeah. So hopefully that does work. Are there any big conflicts that day that you're aware of?
Not so far, but there was probably that.
Yeah, because that would have to be a special meeting, because you have a council, a regular council meeting, the Tuesday.
That's correct.
The, the time span for this master plan report, are we talking five years, ten years?
It's a five-year plan.
Five-year plan.
Five-year plan, yeah.
And did I hear directly, hope I did, that the GIS application, unless the plan is complete, comes with the plan?
Uh, yeah, so that's a, that's a tool that's gonna be for the city. So it's, we're using the tool for evaluation and inventory, but it is something that will stay in the city.
Free of charge, too.
Free of charge, initially, actually, because it is a platform that we pay for ourselves, but for the, for our study is for free, at least for the...
So Kleiman pays for it right now, it's a third-party service?
It is, yes, yes.
Would it be possible to get the slide showed emailed to me, so that we could get it presented to the council as well, so they'd have all the dates?
Yes, and I think, I sent the Powers Point slides.
I have it in my packet.
I have it. Yeah, it's in the packet, but I can still send it to whoever. Okay, fine. Yeah, and once we get the other dates signed, we can send those too. Any more questions?
Thank you, good luck.
Yeah, thank you.
So the only reason, excuse me, the next item on is to change the name, it's a discussion, change the name of the field at Sentinel Park. My primary purpose, I think we've seen this, we've talked about it, we've not done any action, I'm happy to get this on our next city council agenda for a resolution for approval. I just want to make sure we're all comfortable with that before we're...
Giant.
Yep, comfortable with it?
Yes.
I'll make it out for our next meeting.
Okay.
Do you have any more on that?
No, not, no.
Since that, no, it's just a comeback for...
Come back, tell me. Councilman, that's your next.
Okay, the next item is a discussion regarding a residence, Galen Mac need and request for sewer line extension along...
No, no, you're, you're up.
Item G.
Yeah, Mayor today. Okay. The next item is update and discussion on a concept plan for the proposed plaques on Coconut Baines and municipal parks. And, you got, Phil, Councilman, Mayor, at the meeting, before Christmas, I mentioned that I'd like to update the council regarding a concept plan for municipal park plaques. And, and the history behind that is, during the Fiesta de la Ria that was held down in the vicinity of Juan Medina Park, I had a couple of residents from Ward Two come up and ask me, and they were young residents, is who is Juan Medina? And I said, I don't know, but I will find it out. And so I started searching to try to find, get information as to who Juan Medina was, very little information, and even less information when I was trying to look for a photograph of Mr. Medina. And then later on, I got another inquiry, by phone, about why not try to identify in some fashion who the parks were named for, and in this case, specifically Juan Medina. And I said, why not? So I, I went over to Base Park, and I went over to Coconut Park, and to see if there was any, an item, a plaque, or information that were identified, a little bit about the history as to why, for whom the park was named. And I didn't find any, so I came up with an idea, well, why don't we try to develop a, some sort of a plaque that could be placed at the base of the rock wall, because the three parks have basically similar rock walls as foundations. A plaque that could talk a little bit about the, the park itself, or facilities and services it has, but also as, a little bit of the history of the individual for whom it was named. So give an idea of who the park was for. And doing a little research, I was able to find information on Mr. Coconut, Mr. Baines, and finally on Mr. Juan Medina. It took some time, but I was able to do so, and, and sort of came up with a write-up for those plaques. Next. And so the idea is, if we could get the information on these plaques, and the plaques specifications are, one, it would have the symbol of the Alpine symbol, city symbol, a text, and of course, picture. It would be about twelve inches and twenty inches long, and maybe copper on a metal background, the letter engraved, black in color, and then maybe four screws on the top, so it can be embedded into the rock wall. And I was really amazed that, as I started looking for plaque makers, I found one, which in essence, the company is called Plaque Maker, and they're offering the plaques at $172 each, including shipping and handling. So the total would be for three plaques, $516, which is really not much at all. And so with that, I've updated you, I leave it up to you for discussion, ideas, suggestions, and hopefully whoever wants to, maybe your management team from the Parks Board or the, who's working on the master plan, might want to upgrade what has been researched, and let's see what we can do with it.
Have you talked to the Parks Board about this yet?
I did. I was going to send the, the info to, I know, I know that's true.
So they're supportive?
Uh, well, I haven't, I haven't seen it yet, I guess, unless they're still in the audience right now. I'll send it to you.
Yeah. My recommendation, you send it to them, and then the next time the Parks Board gives their quarterly report, they can give us a recommendation to proceed on with it. Then we can take action and allocate resources and go. Chris, that'd be great.
Okay, next item, a discussion regarding a residence, Glen Mac need and request for a sewer line extension along Mosley Lane within the Alpine City boundary. Before I turn it over to, to let Galen, if I can get the fellow councilman to sort of refer to a, an inlet map that should be in your folder. And the boundary of, the city boundary, if you look down at, at the bottom, is that dash, dot, dot, dash line, that, that sort of goes around all those other lines with dark spots on it, and then it circles around Mosley Lane, and then eventually goes back in towards the city. Now Mosley Lane...
Bosley Loop.
Bosley Loop. Bosley Loop, I'm sorry. Mosley Loop is included within, it's included within the city municipal boundary. And looking again at the small map, you will find those heavy lines with large dots on them, those are depicting the sewer lines in place now. You don't see any along the area around a Mosley Loop. And there are quite a few homes, besides Mr. Galen's home, that are maybe interested in, in getting a sewer line laid out in that vicinity. And so at this point, for that brief introduction, I now pass it on to Galen.
So Galen Mac Ward Two, and so this has been a long bit of research, probably started asking about sewer line about five years ago, and probably about two years ago, I got very interested in, maybe even three years ago, in searching for when that property was annexed into the city. With the cleanup of the records room at the county courthouse, it was very easy to find incorporation documents of the city, and the incorporation documents match up to the survey line on the western side of my property. So that property's been in the city since the 1910 incorporation, which is really confusing because taxes were not paid through 63 to the city, but only to the county. Talking to the previous owner, they said they paid city taxes from 77 on. And to me, this is not an extension, this is a provision of services. We pay taxes to have access to the city services, as is laid out in the state code, and I provided a copy, I don't know if you've got it in a packet, but it certainly lays out the services that the municipality is intended to provide for the taxes it receives. And then as you go on, under, you know, some local government code, section 43.056, if you get all the way down to point F, number two, that's the only thing I've changed in copying that off the web, as I bold-faced it, require a landowner in an area to fund capital improvements necessary to provide municipal services in a manner inconsistent with chapter 395, unless otherwise agreed to by the landowner. I can't seem to figure out any way that 395 would apply to Alpine, Texas, but I certainly am not a lawyer, and let me make that clear. The sewer line does actually head down Mosley Loop, I believe it's 1903 George Hankins' property. We recently installed a clean-out camera at his line, but that is four properties away from my property, and by my surveyor wheel, it's about 900 feet. I did get a, a, an extension fee suggesting that the city needed 2,900 feet, a little bit more than that, it cost to me $73,000 to get a sewer line in my house, and that's, I assume, to my corner post. I have seven, I have 10 acres, it's a 700-foot extension. Now, if there was a sewer line at my corner post, and I wanted it 500 feet down the way, now that's an extension I should pay for. I completely agree with that. I also understand that there are many other parts of the city that do not have services at all, no trash, no water, no roads, no sewer. And so I know this is a bigger deal than me, but I don't have an interest in those properties. I would, I don't, at this point, I've been looking to add a garage, but I don't want to pay more property taxes for services I'm not getting. And so I would just like to have this resolved, whether we disannex, whether we put in services, put in a sewer line, because that's all we're missing out there, or if not, if, I don't want to take this to court, that's why I'm here, I don't want to go to a judge and file a writ of menandus, it's not even a court case kind of deal, it's, it's just filing a writ. So I'm here, just like if my neighbor was being loud at two in the morning, I'd knock on their door, call them up and say, hey, tone it down. And that's all I'm here to do, is say, I want to resolve this, whether I'm in the city, out of the city, but if I'm in the city and paying taxes, I want water and I want sewer. These are the two big things to me. I'll drive on a dirt road, but, you know, I, I don't, I don't feel that it's my responsibility to build out the sewer line for the city, then do I own that sewer line, and then anybody that taps onto it gets to pay me a dollar flush? Or, you know, I mean, you open up a can of worms when you start having the system paid for the build out of, you know, municipal services. And so that's, that's basically all I'm looking for, is, is a direction you all want to go.
So we can't respond back to you, but information discussion is about council talking about the matter.
Right. 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 You can ask me anything you want. I mean, I've just, I've just laid it out there, this is what's been going on, and so, you know, I understand we're concerned about parks and we're concerned about roads, but ultimately, if the citizens aren't, are having to pay to build out water lines and pay to build out sewer lines, I'm not really seeing how this is, you know, a fair, equitable system here.
Thanks, sir.
Absolutely.
I think from our standpoint, we need to sort through, we see municipal boundaries in annexation and disannexation. What we don't see is the documentation associated or obligation relative to add sewers, or roads, or water lines. Same issues in Ward Five, particularly with regard to annexations that occurs in the area, with annexations timeline and disannexations. What I would want to do before we have a discussion about this, is go pull out and look, because not even the deeds are here, I want to go pull up the deed, and I have the deed listed here, so I couldn't make, and I'm very little versed in a lot of this. My actual, I need to go get a sense of the legal description about what this is, because the service orders are there, but the legal description is not, so like, if I have to do some homework, and then come back and have a dialogue about this.
Yes. And at this point, I'd like to say that, to compliment Matt Gaveman for coming forth and expressing his views, and hopefully, maybe in some future point, we might be able to come to some resolution, so.
Yeah. And we'd love to do that. And certainly provide the legal description, right here.
Yes, Curry.
My turn. I want to give council an update on the recent events involving two attacks by dogs on cats, and were, for some of my neighbors, and the action taken by the city in response. So, I wrote down a couple of things, so I want to both of them read them. And this is just my, my point of view from what I've gathered from the emails, and you guys have some information in your packet too. One attack was caught on surveillance video in late November, and the other was not. An eyewitness, the cat owner, reported the attack, but initially couldn't identify the dogs for the, for the earlier one. But after the video, she said that it was the same pair of dogs, but it was several months later. The cats were loose, as were the dogs. The dogs were caught by the animal control and held for two days. Some questions came up regarding the short containment period. The ordinance states that the animals should be held for 10 days to observe for rabies, 10 days from the time of the bite. The dogs were picked up seven or eight days after the attack. Our animal control officers followed the laws and city ordinances. The offending dog owners have been penalized in accordance with our codes of ordinance. The owners have complied with all of their requests in order to keep their pets and keep other pets safe from them. In January, the Animal Advisory Board held an informal meeting. We didn't have a quorum, but I allowed citizens to give statements about the dog attacks. The discussion evolved into leash laws in Alpine and loose dogs in city limits. Second meeting was, was called by citizens that Jessica, the city manager, mayor, myself, and the city attorney were in attendance. That meeting, in my opinion, the couple that requested the meeting had some of their questions addressed, but overall, it was the citizens of Alpine, they're very passionate about wanting action as soon as possible on the loose dogs and the leash laws. Some change to come about as soon as, as soon as we can get that to happen. And the Animal Advisory Board, we've actually, we had been working on the ordinances to make the language stronger since August. So we're still working on changing the language, you know, just to make it stronger, and that's what I have. If you have any questions.
Do you have a timeframe for that conclusion?
No. No timeframe out. I mean, we have a meeting this month, and we'll continue to work on it, but I think, I think it would be a good idea to get some, some input on leash laws and loose dog. But that's what, that's what I'd like to start moving towards.
I think we need to resolve this issue as soon as possible, and it's, it could be their cat, or somebody else's cat, or perhaps even a human that could be affected, so I think the sooner that y'all can move on it, and we can get something on the record. Okay?
Got it. And so, this has been an issue at, I think, all of our wards, in terms of dogs. And one of the challenges, and I know in the packet that came out, the definition of dangerous dog is carried out from a state standpoint, so it doesn't necessarily apply when a dog attacks another animal. So, that is certainly one item that's got to get worked in terms of the ordinance update. I think the other thing, though, that we, council, need to do, and all of the discussions, because we get the quarterly report from the chief about what's going on in the city, in my time in council, I know there have been a number of animal attacks, but we've never heard about them as council in the report. I think one of the things we need to do is ask that, going forward for the quarterly reports, we get specific information about animal attacks. We get the number of dogs that are collected and returned and all that, but I think, there are enough cases in my ward, there was a shooting involving a dog because a dog was actually attacking an individual, so an individual discharged a firearm, he killed the dog because his mother was in danger of being attacked. That particular individual violated the city code firing a firearm within the city limits, and was fined appropriately. But in my view, those are the sorts of issues we're just not hearing. So I think we're going to have to, as part of our city council action, find out specifically one of the incidents involving animals. There is not a day that goes by that I drive the streets, I do not see a dog. And someone might chase down, but most of them are gone. They're, they're gone like the deer, they're on their way. The deer are not considered useful organs to employ in the city, but I do think that we've sort of this more deeply. Is part of the plan for the advisory board to get, is to present, hey, here are the ordinances, here's what ought to be changed?
Yeah, we're going through them. I actually got some, I don't know if everybody did, but Mick gave me some information from some other cities and how they have dealt with this in the past. And I'd like to present that to the board, and so that everybody can look at that and see if there's some things in there that we want to put on, put on our code and stuff. And that's what, that's what I'd like to do, to start with.
We need to look at repeat offenders also.
Mm-hmm.
Okay, I think that's crucial, because, you know, those will continue to do it. So I think we need to look at that and what we can do about that, how we can handle that.
I agree.
Yep. And I know we're going to talk about that probably the next item, in terms of fines and fees associated.
Yeah, we are.
Because frankly, it's not clear, and I think we have, we council probably want to move from up to actually set a fee or fine, as opposed to leaving it to judge to work, because we've had ups and downs depending upon the extenuative circumstances, and there are enough cases going on in Alpine, it's time to decide. Here, here's the issue, and in some cases, it may be unfair, and certainly the judge can go work it, but we've just got, you know, we've got our frustrations involved, there's an animal control that's trying to do something, and the judge shows us the same. Just going to let this one go.
And I think we brought that up at the Thursday meeting, and we've gone through a couple of municipal judges that kind of just sat on it. Hopefully with this new municipal judge that we had, she's proactive. And so I was trying to explain to the folks that, you know, we just got tired of issuing citations and nothing, because nothing was being done, but hopefully now with our new judge, she will put some, some teeth into the, into the ordinances, start finding these people.
When does our judge come back? Do you recall?
The 14th of December.
14th?
December 14th.
14th. No, no, in terms of when do we council get an update?
Oh, she's on for the next one.
The next city council meeting? Okay, so two weeks. Oh, good.
And just mayor, may I, on this ordinance, it's going to do the update, is it just specifically for dogs, or does it include all animals in general, like cats and stuff?
Well, I think, I think we had previously discussed this a couple of years ago, thinking it wasn't that included, all animals, cats and dogs.
Okay. So I can make note of that.
Right. And I posted that in the newspaper several times also, written about it.
Yeah, no, it's, it's probably, I get more calls on that than anything else that matters.
Okay.
Okay. Okay. You're next. Okay, so we agreed at the last meeting, since we postponed the discussion on city fees and charges in the master fee ordinance, and thank you, city employees and department heads for being here. We might ask you questions to get more insights about what's going on. Just from an audience standpoint, we have, get the number where. There are 15 pages of fees that the city charges for all sorts of things. They are currently resident in a number of different ordinances that we, that don't get updated very often. So, the wisdom was, wouldn't it be nice if all of the fees were put into one ordinance, so that the city council could, on a regular basis, look to update those fees and not have to go through all those ordinance, because all those ordinance require separate action. So I think there's value in doing that. The challenge is, this is very painful, coming up with that single ordinance, getting all put together, because we have 15 pages of fees to go through, and as you think about the lines associated with it, you know, well, for those who may not have seen that, but it's, it's a long list. The intent of council was to walk through, as, in our information discussion, to be able to walk through these pages tonight, and ask questions about what they are, and we'll get them recorded, and then use that as basis. I think we're going to end up, is probably a multiple round session. I think this is going to be round one, and then after that, another session, that would get it more finalized, which would then become the basis for a draft ordinance. And then, once we have that draft ordinance, my sense is, that will then need to go out to, to the community for their review and get feedback prior to us heading down this path. So, I think an optimist would say, we might be able to pass this by April 7, or April 2nd. I think a realist would say, eh, we're sometime May or June, so that's going to happen. So that's kind of my sense of perspective about what it's going to take to go through that. I see, and in addition to all of this that we have, you were given a copy of animal control fees, or like your permits, per for services. That was in addition, I was putting on your desk this evening. On top of that, I know there are some fees that are not included. For example, at the airport, there's a flow fee. Right now, it's 10 cents per gallon, that is no longer listed in any of our list. I would also submit that the draft ordinance that's been put together, that we had on our packet, those 18 pages of documents, say we have some formatting issues to go through, because a person far better than me, and I recognize, I'm slow, I can't make heads or tails about some of this stuff. And I think in part of it, we're going to want to, once we've gone through and got questions, probably get this posted so people can come look. We get input back as council members, so when we do the next round, we have a better sense of that, because I know we've all gone, the opportunity to go talk to people, but I think we got more talking to do before we put this in place. And as Councilman Olivas mentioned last time, fees, what fees? What are these fees we're talking about? So this is an education process for many, many of our residents, with the 2,500 households, I dare say, if we asked now and did a survey, how many are aware of all of the fees that we have, we're probably batting less than, than one out of 100, so I think we struggle. So, that is background. Megan, did you have anything else that you'd like to add, from your perspective, since you're the master fee collector?
This is a big revenue source for the city. 73% of our revenue is sales tax and property tax. The rest of it comes from either fines, or set fees, or services that we provide. Each fund operates slightly different. Your enterprise funds, of course, are based on what we're supplying for water, gas, sewer, sanitation, airport is fuel. I would hope that this, the city council does take into consideration that this is one of your revenue sources, but I also would ask that tonight, since you've had your managers and supervisors here twice now, that you give them the opportunity to just make a little statement, questions that they may have, concerns they may have, things that have come up. I know that they've all been really eager and have probably knocked on a few of your doors, probably made some phone calls. Some of the departments just really want, let's just get the fees in place. You know, we're losing money in some ways, and the city doesn't have that ability. We need to make sure that we can collect as, as much as reasonably as possible. Of course, with the citizens in mind as well, but that you can move forward budget-wise, year to year, to support all of your, your projects, your plans, what you want to do. And in order to do that, these fees are really important, and some of these guys who've been working on this for, for months, are a little eager to tell you, you know, these are our thoughts, this is what we'd like to do, and they're here for you to ask your questions.
Okay. So, do you have an formatting order you'd like for people to come up?
Alphabetical. Or you go by fund. I know that the airport has quite a few people here tonight. I'd encourage them, from my standpoint, because their only revenue is really fuel.
You got it.
And so they're, they're trying to find ways to have revenue to move on with the state projects, where they have to come up with their question, whether it be 10, 25, 50%, and the only way to do that is to look at their fuel prices. So I'd kind of like to put one person on the spot.
Uh-oh.
Isabel.
Isabel.
Isabel and Kip, either one. They've done a lot of research.
Yeah, so as a reminder, Kip is the chair of the airport advisory board, and Isabel's the secretary to that board.
You don't skip.
Just manning up by himself, and Isabel's saying, "Go, Kip, go."
I don't know if you all got this.
So this is on page 14, if you want.
This is the thing that Isabel worked very hard and put together. This is the third survey, is that correct, Isabel? This is the third survey, last one, do you think?
That was actually provided in your packet, the last meeting.
Yeah, but this, but this is the third survey.
This is the fourth.
Okay, we had four surveys. She probably did, I probably just didn't have a chance to. Anyway, all three surveys, when we did it, we compared to our local competitors that are here, including an airport up toward the Midland, Odessa area, that is a transient-type airport, which, we're a port of destination. And we discovered that we're on our jet fuel, that we're quite a bit behind the rest of the field on this, but in some cases, up to 79 cents, down to about 60 cents. The board in general agreed upon 59 cent increase of both to the self-service and to the full service on the jet fuel cells alone, to help bring in money to the, to the city for the airport. And the reason that we're asking for these things is, the airport is, is been kind of behind where it needs to be at this time. It's, we have a lighting system out there that was made in 1968. I've preached about this before. We do have a letter of interest to them, but we have to figure out a way to pay for this lighting system. And we can't keep asking other departments to help us out. We've had phoning in our accounts before, but something happened, I don't know if that's for history. But anyway, we have to get our copper up to be able to deal. And one of the things that was mentioned earlier, the parks deal... One of the things that was mentioned earlier at the Parks deal was that the...